There will be no chaplain in attendance tonight due to Covid safe measures still being in place. We are not expecting a fire drill this evening. If the alarm sounds, please exit the room by the fire exits located at the back of the room and assemble in the car park. Public toilets are situated in the foyer through the main doors to the chamber. In relation to Covid, please be assured that we have put appropriate cleansing and social distancing measures in place to ensure that this meeting is undertaken in a Covid safe manner. All present tonight are aware of the Covid secure guidelines and nobody in attendance is displaying symptoms. Can I please ask that all mobile phones and other electronic devices are switched to silent or to airplane mode for the duration of the meeting? With regards to recording the meeting, please can I draw your attention to the council's protocol for recording, photography and use of social media which is available on the council website. In particular, please note that permission for record does not extend to the public gallery and the rights of members of the public attending must be respected. Please note, this meeting is also being webcast to allow the public to watch the meeting remotely if they wish. So can I remind all parties to please use their microphone when speaking? Can I ask all members to remain seated throughout the duration of the meeting? Lastly, can I also please remind councillors on the protocol of debate at council meetings, in particular that members may only speak once on any motion or amendment and that speeches must be no longer than five minutes. There is only one item on the agenda for this evening's meeting, which is for council to consider, conferring the title of honorary alderman upon former councillor, Mr Terry Hart. Councillor Rennie, as proposer for the recommendation, would you like to introduce this item and propose the recommendation?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I am absolutely delighted and honoured to propose this motion for councillor Terry Hart to be an honorary alderman of this borough. Terry is, not only was he a councillor here for 40-plus years, but he was also a council ward colleague of mine in Bondfields for three years. And during that time, I was able to see firsthand how much work, commitment and how much he had for, how much time and energy he had for the ward residents and the wards of Wesley, which he served for such an incredible length of time. Now, very much different politics perhaps on the left wing of the party, but Dennis Skinner was known as the beast of Bolsover, and I think perhaps as well as honorary alderman, we have to bestow the title of the beast of Bondfields upon Terry, which I hope I will add as an amendment to this motion. But Terry is somebody who actually best, he reflects the values of our organisation as a council. Local government is nothing like the rough and tumble of Westminster national politics, as much as our residents perhaps like to think so sometimes. And actually, in local government, we have to stand for the principles of bipartnership, work across the aisle, working in a friendly way with our political opponents. And while we have our disputes at the ballot box and while we part across different views here in the council chamber, actually, in local government, we work across the aisle on a regular basis at all times. And I think Terry epitomised that nature of local government. He epitomised that nature of working across the aisle, across all parties, and being somebody who was a genuine friend to every single person in this room. Now, Terry had a stint where he helped lead this council in the late 90s, early 2000s, when the council was in no overall control. Now, when councils go into no overall control, things could break down quickly. We can't, like Westminster Government, call a snap general election. We can't go back to the voters until the following May. And actually, it does require us all to come together at times to work out what is best for our residents. And Terry, in those moments, showed what kind of a genuinely brilliant local politician he was in standing up and being there for this borough, and standing up and actually being someone who's willing to lead it and work with political opponents for the good of the borough. So Terry Hart is somebody who I have absolute pleasure and honour to put forward and propose to be an honorary alderman this borough, and I hope that motion will be seconded and supported.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Councillor Francis, I understand you wish to second the recommendations. Is that correct?
Indeed, it is. I'm going to read mine because there's a lot. It's an honour to be able to second the recommendation to confer the title of honorary alderman upon Terry Hart, who stood down as a councillor earlier this year. Not many, if any, councillors are able to claim they've served the people of Havant Borough for 40 years without a break. The residents of Bondfields Ward obviously recognised the quality of the man who represented them and re-elected him time after time. They trusted him. He worked tirelessly for the good of the borough and particularly supported those residents who needed help. He was always a community councillor and was especially supportive of people with disabilities, determined that they should be able to be involved and valued in the community too. He served on Stoughton Park Joint Management Committee and helped in the formation of the Right to Work Group that helped Stoughton Country Park achieve the blue flag status by employing and having volunteers from the hard-to-reach people of the borough. He involved the then mayor, Vic Pearce-Jones, in the opening of the labyrinth at Stoughton Beacon Nursery, built by people with learning disabilities. Local schools also benefited from his services. He was chair of the governors on Shops, COPS First and Middle Schools and continued to be chair when they were amalgamated. Other service was as a trustee of Lee Park Community Centre. For me, Terry was a font of wise information. He knew the workings of the council through and through and had served on and chaired so many committees and understood and appreciated the work of officers. He was the longest-serving Labour Group leader on Havant Council and served as joint council leader when Havant was a hung council with no overall majority in 1997. I can think of no more deserving candidate for this honour and ask you to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Francis. Does any member wish to speak or debate this matter? Thank you, Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have worked alongside ex-councillor Hart for some 11 years now. I would like to heartily endorse this proposal. The thing that impresses me most about my dealings with ex-councillor Hart is that he never allowed party politics to stand in the way of what was best for the residents of this borough. I always found him to be a perfect gentleman and his desire to look after the residents couldn't be much by anybody. I think we could all hope to be as good a councillor as he was. So I have great pleasure in endorsing the proposal.
Thank you, Councillor Turner. Councillor Briggs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have served on this council with Terry for over 20 years. And as leaders of our respective parties, we haven't always seen eye to eye, certainly at budget time. We've had a number of heated discussions in this chamber about which budget is best for the borough. But what I can say about Terry, not only is he a gentleman, but he has represented the people of Lee Park over the last 40 years and always supported the interests of the people of this borough. And I have great pleasure in supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councillor Briggs. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can only speak for my 11 years as a councillor, which is obviously only a quarter of the public service that Terry has given to the borough. But during my time as leader, I have regular meetings with Terry as leader of the opposition. And I found my meetings with him were always constructive and, as has been said, handled in a very gentlemanly way. I found him not so much opposition, but more of a critical friend. And what this means is that when you receive criticism, you take it on board because you know that Terry is one of those people who has always wanted what was best for the borough. And it always means that it's taken in the right way, it's respected and valued. It is, I would say, testament to Terry that it is the opposition who are in their droves wishing to bestow this honour upon him.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Is there anybody else that would like to? Councillor Quellin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a short thing. I spent eight years previously, when I was on the council before, with Terry on planning. We used to have some fun, believe it or not. In those days, we did have fun. Not all the time, but we did smile. And I found him very good, a critical friend. We often used to talk about health and all sorts of problems. And I was amazed when I came back again. I mean, I retired in 91, when we actually shared control, and he was the kindest one of the Labour Group, believe you me. And at the time, I was in the minority, but I got on fabulously with him. You know, we got on very well. We both had the same aim, to look after the people of Lee Park. I retired and then, lo and behold, I come back and Terry's still here, bless him. So yes, you couldn't have picked a nicer man to bestow this honour on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Quellin. Anybody else? Members, it has been proposed and seconded. Members approve that. A) the council confers the title of honorary alderman upon former councillor, Mr Hart, who has rendered eminent service to the council over and above a councillor's normal duties and (b) subject to the council's approval of the appointment of 2.1a) the democratic services team leader, in consultation with the mayor, be instructed to make all further arrangements necessary with a view to the presentation in accordance with adopted practice of an appropriate frame scroll and civic buffet on a date to be decided. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you, members. Mrs Harding, please can you confirm the result of the vote?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The vote is carried.
Thank you, Mrs Harding. This concludes this extraordinary meeting of the council, and I therefore close the meeting at two minutes past five. Please can I ask that all members remain seated as we will move straight on to the agenda for the meeting of full council. Thank you, members. Councillor Hart, would you like to reply?
Oh, you've got one.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, members, for bestowing that honour on me. Very, very taken back by the speeches that everyone have done. And I thank the leader of the council as well, who, we did work together for three years, but it was amicable. And my belief is that as a councillor, as a local councillor, it isn't politics, it's about what you win and what you do for the residents of the borough. And I always say that headlines in the paper isn't necessarily you working for the borough. Those things are done quietly and working together with opposition. And I'm very honoured the fact that this council overwhelmingly, as a conservative council, actually has bestowed this honour on me. And I would like to say my great appreciation and thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hart. It's been a pleasure. Thank you, members, for your patience while we move to the second agenda for the night. I will not repeat the housekeeping announcements, as I have already read those out, but I would like to remind everybody that this meeting is still being recorded and to remind councillors of the protocol for debate. Thank you, members. Item one on the agenda is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had apologies from councillor Ian Robinson, councillor David Guest and councillor Jolo.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interests. Members, are there any declarations of interest? Thank you. Item three on the agenda is confirmation of minutes. Do any members have any amendments to the minutes? Thank you. Can I have a proposer to approve the minutes of the meeting of the council held on 22nd of September 2021? Thank you, Councillor Kennett. And a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Members, all those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you. The motion is carried. Item four is mayor's report. My report is set out in the agenda. Do any members have any questions on my report? Thank you. Is my report noted? Thank you. Item five on the agenda is public questions. We have received 13 questions from members of the public for tonight's agenda. A full list of questions have been circulated as a supplementary paper and a copy provided for members for this meeting. I propose that questions from Mrs Skeneton are taken first, as Ms Skeneton is in attendance this evening, with the remaining questions being read out in the order they appear on the supplementary paper. Ms Skeneton, would you like to come forward and ask your questions, after which the relevant cabinet lead will respond?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I would like to say that on arrival I was handed this handout, which gives the copied out questions and answers. And given that I have no change to my question of councillor Alex Rennie regarding his partnership for South Hampshire meeting, I haven't had a chance to read his reply in detail there, but I have no change to my question. So may I propose that I not read that out? What do you think? Well, I've actually got the reply, the council's support. Oh, would you like, shall I read the question then? Right, okay. At a recent partnership for South Hampshire meeting, members suggested that some of the £90 million Southern Water Fine should be used to take more agricultural land out of production on the basis that would reduce, that that would reduce nitrates flowing into the Solent and allow more housing development. Given the ongoing clear photographic evidence, including the latest BBC video of this, of Southern Water sewage discharges directly into the Solent at Langston, does the council leader still support the intensive housebuilding on Haling and Havant's mainland, given that Southern Water has provided residents with no immediate and permanent plan to prevent sewage nitrates from fouling local seawater? If the leader does support the housebuilding that will lead, both in the building process, the consequent foul water run-offs and residents' foul water drainage, what reassurance can he give for ensuring our local waters will be safe for recreational uses and healthy ecosystems?
Thank you very much, Mrs Skeneton. The council supports a robust and comprehensive investigation into the discharge that took place recently by the regulator. The regulator is not Havant Borough Council, that is, the Environment Agency. The council does not licence wastewater treatment works, nor does have any enforcement powers over the licences and conditions and restrictions they contain. However, we will watch the situation carefully. The overflows that take place happen in periods of intense weather, when runoff from impermeable surfaces, as roads, means that the stormwater system can become inundated. This is a remnant from when those systems were originally built and means that surface water and foul water enter the system together. Whilst the scenes that we've all witnessed are not how Southern Water should be treating our local environment in the 21st century and needs to stop, and I do personally believe it is unacceptable for it to be a long term to carry on, it's better that the alternative, that this water coming over is still better than the alternative, which is for wastewater and sewage to back up into streets and people's homes. That is why Southern Water's licence allows this practice to take place under strict conditions. The key question is whether these conditions were followed. The standards for drainage in new developments are very different to those that take place when most houses in the borough were built. It is now necessary for surface water which drains off on roads and other surfaces to be separated from foul water coming off houses, so there's not a big increase in the rate of water entering the system when a storm takes place. This means that new development can take place without adding to the pressure on the drainage system. The borough needs new homes. Our young people cannot afford to get onto the housing ladder and our waiting lists and waiting times are too high. It is perfectly possible to build new homes and for Southern Water to reduce stormwater discharges. At the same time, that's what needs to happen and what we hope will happen.
Mrs Skeneton, was that your first question? Would you like to explain your second? Thank you.
Right, I'll move on to the second then, yes. Madam Chair, I did give a slight amendment to my question that I'd originally put in at the end of last week to Jenny Harding in light of the fact that there was the publication by the council in Hailing's Herald November 1. So I did provide that, a little piece of paper this evening.
Thank you.
It's only slightly tweaked. The substance of the question remains the same.
Thank you.
May I preface my question to councillor Satchwell as follows. I welcome the council's publicising of the Hailing Seafront ambition in Hailing Herald's November 1 edition. I would like to note the Hailing Herald's editorial deadline was October 15. Hailing residents who happened to subscribe to the council's press releases read first on October 26, 2021, that exhibitions on Havant's ambition for Hailing Seafront would be held on the now amended November 3 and now November 11. It's now November 11 and 13 from the November 1 Herald paper, with comments deadline still remaining for November 21. Residents need more time than 21 days. That is assuming that a busy pre-Christmas November allows them to share and discuss and feedback their views on this important document. The Seafront regeneration document was republished for the Cabinet in September 2021, providing opportunity for it to be well-publicised in the Herald October 1 and again in November 1, as it has been now, plus on local radio with hard copies from early October in Hailing's library. When my question referenced restrictive audience, it is because so many people choose not to view documents online and don't subscribe to the council's online press releases. Stakeholder engagement document guiding principles, sections 2 to 6, cannot be met, in my opinion, with this unfair timescale and method of engagement. Will councillor Satchwell please consider removing the November 21 deadline and provide a suitably wider platform for effective and meaningful two-way engagement?
Thank you very much for your question and thank you for highlighting as well the four-page bright and colourful pull-out we put in the Hailing Herald newspaper. As a Hailing Island resident, I hear regularly and frequently concerns about everything going online. And so when this project was undertaken, it was a very clear requirement that we should make sure that we reach as many residents as possible, and that is why that decision was taken. So engagement with local residents and businesses and key stakeholders is critical to the success of delivery of regeneration aspirations for Hailing Seafront. We aim for our engagement programme to be inclusive. Residents can engage with the programme in many ways. So we're holding exhibition days at Hailing Island Community Centre on Station Road on Thursday, the 11th of November, between 2 and 5. We recognise that this isn't helpful if you work. So there will be a further exhibition on Saturday, the 13th of November at 10am, finishing at 1pm. We have created areas on the main website of the Havant Borough Council website, in case people go there by accident, but the main content is actually on havewithhavant.co.uk, which is the council's regeneration website. We have an online survey, a mapping tool, and this has been available since the middle of October. And anybody that has contacted Regeneration mailbox has been directed there. Written submissions can be made to the Plaza and to our Dropbox at Beauchamp's Information Centre. We can also take points that are raised more casually via regeneration@havant.gov.uk. Promotion has been promoted through press releases, and I'm very pleased that this was actually picked up today by the Portsmouth News, who gave some great coverage of what's happening, through social media posts, through the four-page pull-out of the Hailing Herald in November. Posters have been sent to Hailing Island Community Centre and to Hailing Library. The team have emailed stakeholders, residents' associations... The team have emailed stakeholders, residents' associations, businesses. Hard copies of the ambition document can be requested. This work builds on the work undertaken by Hemingway Design in January 2019 and Mace in December 2019, 20 and 20. An extensive engagement already completed within these pieces of work join up really with this. And so whilst we are working to the 21st of November, we aim to create a positive and collaborative working relationship and engagement that will be ongoing, and I think ongoing is really important. So a lot of people have thought, and I've spoken to some quite vocal members of our community, who feel like this is the master plan or the absolute plan. This is not. This is the ideas and the series of ideas that we're bringing together, and we need to get initial feedback. And so I believe it's an appropriate timescale. If we are being inundated by people who haven't had time to respond, then that might be something in the future we would look at, but I believe that the period we have put forward is long enough, and we need time to review the results. So in answer to your question, I'm actually going to give a direct answer. Will we look to remove the deadline of the 21st of November? We won't at this stage. I do believe we've done everything we can to go far and wide to reach as many people as possible.
Thank you, councillor Satchwell. Thank you, Ms. Skeenerton.
Thank you, members. I will now read out the remaining questions, one by one, and ask the relevant cabinet leads to respond. Question one was received from Mr. Owens, and it reads, I note that the council now has an environmental strategy published. Given the devastating pollution going on in both harbours, pollution of the borough's jewel in the crown, Blue Flag Beach, and the £190 million uplift to the local economy from tourism, when will the council commit to testing the harbours for pathogens found in excrement for the health and safety of its citizens in the water around the borough, and also to protect the environment it claims to protect? Councillor Thane Smith, would you like to respond to Mr. Owens' first question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Owens, for his question. Firstly, I would like to emphasise that we all want to minimise pollution from any source in our coastal waters and rivers. The beaches at Hailing Island attract thousands of visitors to the area every year, and we want our visitors to feel confident that they can swim and enjoy the facilities there safely. The Blue Flag Beach Mr. Owens mentions in his question is adjacent to the designated bathing waters of Hailing Bay, which is a different body of water to that of the harbours, and is subject to different water quality influences, different public health considerations, and different regulatory duties. For public health purposes, the harbours are known informally as recreational waters, which have no specific status under the body of public health legislation. For environmental purposes, the harbours are classified as transitional waters under the Water Environment Regulations 2017. The Environment Agency has a duty to classify and monitor water bodies under the Water Environment Regulations six and 11, and is also bound by the duties under Regulation three, which requires it to exercise its regulatory functions to support the achievement of environmental objectives. One of the functions of the Environment Agency is to regulate polluting activities under the Environment Permitting Regulations 2016. And under these regulations, the Environment Agency is the regulating authority for Southern Water's wastewater treatment works, providing the permission to allow discharges under restricted circumstances. The Environment Agency is also responsible for the classification of bathing waters for their water quality, and to monitor for the levels of pathogens present during the bathing season. The Environment Agency's data tells us that the water quality at our bathing beaches is consistently in the excellent category, and this has been the case for many years. This information is available to the public and is on the Environment Agency website. The council necessarily relies upon the Environment Agency for guidance and support on all water quality matters, and currently sees no justification in spending council taxpayers' money in establishing a discretionary programme of routine water quality monitoring in recreational waters. The council's focus remains on working in partnership with Environment Agency, the water companies, and other interested parties in various fora to push for the environments we all seek. Thank you. My reply will be given to Democratic Services for the minutes.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Thane Smith. Question two was received from Mr. Owens and reads, with so many outstanding questions from government inspectors and others regarding transport assessments and coastal strategy, it seems that the council is in a hurry to push through their seafront regeneration ambition and the Rooks Farm development in the November timeframe. Has the council spotted any loopholes in the environmental bill currently going through Parliament that may scupper its ambition, given the environment bill will be enshrined in law before the end of the year? Councillor Satchwell, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the council continues to monitor the progress of the environment bill, as this will have widespread implications for many of the council's functions, including planning and wastewater collection, or, I'm sorry, and waste collection. The bill was expected to progress to royal assent before now. In anticipation, work has already begun on how the council would respond to the proposals in the environment bill. For example, the council's emerging local plan contains a requirement for all development to achieve biodiversity net gain, which is a key part of the bill. The environment bill has been in development for many years, and its proposals have changed during that time. However, there are no proposals that would mean that new developments currently being planned for anywhere in the borough would not take place. It should be noticed, noted that whilst proposals for Hailing Island seafronts are being proposed by Havant Borough Council, the Rook Farm development site is being progressed by the private sector, and so the council has no control over timescales of when a planning application is submitted. We have, I've read recently online, a lot of people asking about a proposed event being held by a developer. This is an event proposed by the developer, not an event proposed by the council. So just to be clear, that is independent of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Satchwell. Question three was also received from Mr. Owens and Reeds. What was the reasoning behind why Havant Borough Council did not publish physical signs on Hailing's beaches following Environment Agency advice against bathing on October the 9th? What should residents expect from the council in this regard? Councillor Satchwell, would you like to respond to this, please?
Thank you. So the Bathing Water Regulations 2013 contain both the procedures for issuing of formal advice against bathing, and for the execution of local authority bathing water management measures, which would include a duty to provide public information. This legislation only applies during the UK bathing season, which runs from the 15th of May to the 30th of September. Pollution incidents that occur at the bathing, at the bathing beaches outside of the bathing season are managed under the council's generic emergency planning procedures, and are not under the bathing water regulation. No emergency planning procedures were implemented on October the 9th. As the council was promptly informed, the officers of the relevant authorities found no physical evidence of sewage pollution during their respective investigations into the complaints received. The council understands that subsequent investigations have ruled out any possibility of a significant release of sewage from the local wastewater network, as having caused an incident on the 9th of October.
Thank you, councillor Satchwell. Question four was received from Ms. Hearn and Reeds. Why are they apparently failing to condemn Southern Water for its appalling sewage discharges from its Bud Farm site into Langston Harbour? Councillor Satchwell, please, would you like to respond?
Thank you. The council are not the regulator for discharges made by Southern Water. We would look to the Environment Agency to determine whether or not any discharge was lawful in the context of their permit. We would be cautious in condemning actions that could be entirely compliant with the discharge conditions associated with the permit. However, following the leader of the council's recent press release on this matter, councillor Rene, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, councillor Satchwell. I have made, as councillor said, a number of public statements, I believe, on this matter, certainly by predecessor councillors on that matter. And I think we're always been quite clear, as in my previous statements, that actually sewage, sewage discharging in, or stormwater overflow discharges into Langston Harbour is in the long term unacceptable, and we will be calling on Southern Water to work towards the long-term goal of eliminating stormwater discharges, and will continue to make that case.
Thank you, councillor Satchwell, and also councillor Rene. Question five was also received from Ms. Hearn and Reeds. Does the council or its members have any pecuniary interest in Southern Water? Councillor Satchwell, please, would you like to respond? Thank you.
Thank you. The council does not have any pecuniary interest in Southern Water. Any councillor owning shares in Southern Water would have to declare this on their declaration of interest, which is available on our website and updated annually. In addition, every councillor is invited to declare their interests in topics on council agenda meetings, council agendas meetings, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Satchwell. Question six was received from Mr. Parham and Reeds. We keep hearing that the majority of pollution in the Havant Borough Council catchment area is waterborne. As the whole Solent and south-east coast wastewater treatment is the responsibility of Southern Water, what is Havant Borough Council doing to coordinate a joined-up approach with all the affected councils to, A, drive a consolidated stand, B, ensure the real problem and risks are addressed, and C, clean-up solutions are implemented? Councillor Rene, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council continues to positively and proactively work with partners, partner authorities through the Partnership for South Hampshire, together with government, Natural England's, the Environment Agency, Portsmouth Water, and Southern Water, and any other stakeholders, in order to address water management in the Solent appropriately. The work that is done at PUSH aims to guide investment in water-related infrastructure and address the existing inadequacies as capacity constraints in drainage and surface water runoff, and the environmental impact it may have, as I alluded to earlier in my responses, and my councillors and colleagues also alluded to in their responses. The council is also proactively engaging and working with Southern Water through the Drainage and Wastewater Management Plan, which will provide long-term plans to improve water quality and drainage systems in the borough. As part of that management plan, a risk assessment has been undertaken for the wastewater treatment works to ascertain the current performance and future vulnerabilities of the wastewater system.
Thank you, councillor Rene. Question seven is received from Ms. Saunders and Reeds. Reference Havant regeneration plan, report page 46. The report states that work will be ready in early 2022. Does this work include engagement with local residents and stakeholders? I note that the Hailing plan has a clear engagement programme. Will there be one in place for Havant? Councillor Pike, please, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council is keen to engage with a range of stakeholders as it refreshes the regeneration strategy for the borough, and some of that work is already well underway. The strategy itself is by its nature quite high-level, as it covers aspirations for the whole borough. When we look in detail at different locations like Hailing Seafront, we will do much more work by way of local engagement with residents, and the Hailing Seafront work that councillor Satchwell has just previously outlined is a good example of what may take place in other areas. Engagement with stakeholders, including residents, will be an ongoing process, and we hope to establish a range of ways in which residents can contribute going forward.
Thank you, councillor Pike. Question eight, which has been received from Ms. Saunders, Reeds. Reference Waterlooville and Lee Park regeneration plans, report page 46. What are the timelines on the regeneration initiatives for Waterlooville and Lee Park? Will the residents be engaged? Councillor Pike, would you like to apply to this, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So alongside the refreshed regeneration strategy, we are working on an updated delivery programme, which will set out delivery timetables for the different areas. I am hoping to bring this back to cabinets in early 2022 and on to full council, and this will include our aspirations for Waterlooville and Lee Park. We know that local residents want to get involved, to contribute, and as I mentioned, we will look at establishing a range of ways in which residents can keep up to date, get involved, and participate in projects as they move forward. And by way of a supplementary, because I wasn't sure whether it's going to be out in time for today's meeting, but it is, we've today released a press release and a suite of information on the economies for healthier lives bid that the council looks successful in gaining, and there will be further briefing for members, which I know has already been circulated, and for residents about that programme in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pike. Question nine was received from Ms. Saunders and Reeds. Reference feasibility study, Hailing Billy Trail and Bridge options, report page 47. What are the timelines for the Consultation Programme? A resident recently asked me, with the government talking about investment in regional railways, what would the chances of the Hailing Island Branch Railway being reopened as the road traffic in the summer gets very blocked? I am sure this has been evaluated before, but is it an opportunity to revisit this option in this current feasibility study? Councillor Pike?
Thank you. I can see councillors waiting for a history lesson on transport to Hailing Island, but I'm afraid I'm not going to give it tonight. In answer to Ms. Saunders' question, so there are a number of feasibility studies and technical assessments of route options being developed. These are not yet completed, and they will be integrated with work that councillors will be familiar with, like the local walking and cycling infrastructure plan, the wider Hailing Island seafront ambition that we spoke about earlier, and the coastal management strategy, which will cover the area of West Hailing where the Billy Trail runs. So more information on bringing those together will be available in due course. In terms of reinstalling rail infrastructure and new bid is not considered a viable option, because that route would no longer then be useful for active travel like walking and cycling, and the rail crossing of the A3023 would create untold congestion, and the seasonal demand would make it very difficult to achieve financial sustainability. However, we as the council recognise the importance of the Billy Trail as a route, and our focus is on improving it as an active travel corridor. This will offer potential benefits to the A3023 from reducing congestion and providing an innovative, flexible, and demand-oriented methods of travel along that corridor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pike. Question 10 was also received from Ms. Saunders and Reeds. Reference network meeting, report page 33. The report states that both meetings have very good attendance. Can you provide attendance numbers and demographics? Councillor Robinson, would you like to respond to Ms. Saunders' question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The networks were set up to bring busy community groups and partners together to share resources, information, and create collaborations. The network groups were established a number of years ago for organisation who work in the borough. The meetings are attended by up to 40 organisations, including voluntary sector and statutory organisations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. The last question was received from Mr. Comley and Reeds. The last question was received from Mr Comley and Reeds. Given the recent shocking evidence of uncontrolled raw sewage spills into Langston and Chichester Harbour from Southern Water's wastewater treatment centre at Bud's Farm, we believe that all future investment in this facility should be directly targeted and focused on the immediate actions necessary to address the underlying causes of these spills. Now that Haven't Borough Council have approved the plan by Portsmouth Water with Southern Water for the Haven't Thicket reservoir, will this council provide an unequivocal assurance that will not validate or approve any planning application from Southern Water, which includes the construction of a wastewater recycling facility at Bud's Farm, until all outstanding issues with the existing plant and processes have been resolved to the regulator's satisfaction? councillor Satchwell, please would you like to comment?
Thank you. I think the number of questions on this matter suggests that maybe some FAQs could be released for the benefit of residents. So the council supports the Environment Agency as regulator to the country's water companies, investigating the events that took place in Langston Harbour recently. It is important that everyone knows what took place and whether that was lawful or not. Water companies, as a single supplier industry, operate under strict controls and regulations. These are in place to protect customers. This includes what capital investments can take place at wastewater treatment works. There is no planning application for a wastewater recycling facility at Bud's Farm, although the council is aware that consultation on high level options for the future freshwater provision, which includes such a facility, has taken place. Nonetheless, as a simple matter of fact, the council cannot arbit, I'm catching arbitrarily choose to not validate planning applications from any one organisation. If this meets the necessary requirements and includes the necessary documentation, a planning application must have to be validated. As a further statement of fact, any planning application from any applicant must be assessed on its own merits. This does of course though include the impact on our environment and water quality, which are material planning considerations, and the council will take these into account in determining planning applications.
Thank you councillor Satchwell. Thank you members. As stated earlier, the two last questions listed on the supplementary paper have been previously responded to and therefore this concludes business under this agenda item. Item six is cabinet committee recommendations to cancel. There are no recommendations to cancel from committees for tonight's meeting. Next item is number seven, the leaders' report. councillor Renee, are there any matters you wish to add to your published report?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Renee. Item eight is cabinet lead reports. I will now ask the cabinet leads if they have any matters they wish to add to the published reports. councillor Baines, do you have anything you wish to add to your published report?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Baines. councillor Bowman?
Thank you. Thank you. councillor Baiman.
councillor Pike?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Pike. councillor Robinson?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Robinson. councillor Satchwell?
No, thank you madam mayor.
councillor Thane Smith?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you members. Item nine is cabinet leads and chairman's question times. Do any members have any questions for the leader on matters within his report? councillor Wilson?
Thank you madam mayor. In his report, the leader mentions refreshed corporate strategy and I wondered whether he could provide us with an indication of the direction of travel for the new corporate strategy.
Thank you very much councillor Wilson. Are you pleased to know our themes be very similar to the ones of your previous administration? So we like the themes you settled upon, we might have one addition to it, but we'll update members in due course when that is, but hopefully not very long I can go public with that information.
Has anybody else any questions for councillor Renee? Do any members have any questions for councillor Baines please? councillor Keast?
Thank you madam mayor. I'm concerned that there was nothing on there about enforcement plan that comes under your department, doesn't it? It doesn't? Okay, then I've got that wrong. Thank you.
but I can give you a little bit of an update if that's helpful.
Madam mayor, if I may?
Okay, good.
Although it doesn't form part of my report and isn't currently within my portfolio, I
So the planning enforcement team is very much demand led and therefore it's difficult
can update members to say that it will be shortly.
to anticipate. However, we've recently put in place revised twenty twenty one enforcement plan, which
So the leader will communicate a slight change of portfolio responsibilities going
details the team's priority areas and targets to enable effective screening.
forward and with the resources required for this particular area of work and resources
Priority one cases are those that there is a risk of permanent harm and require an
increasing, I will be taking on planning enforcement very, very shortly.
immediate response and these include listed buildings and trees with orders in place. If I may, planning enforcement does actually fall in my portfolio, so I'm quite happy These will always take priority over other cases. Priority two cases would include large scale developments and those where there is harm to answer the question if you require. to the landscape. Priority three, which make up by far the majority of cases, involve untidy sites, advertisements, minor breaches of planning control. The team, aided by the business support team, operates on a triage system where the cases are allocated according to severity and then reviewed on a regular basis by the team manager. The workload is also dependent on other factors such as appeals against decisions and curt proceedings, which can prove somewhat time consuming and inevitably will result in delays to the priority and two and three cases. Don't worry, you won't have to hear me talk for much longer. So the team, which start as part of the broader neighbourhood quality team, benefits from the support from the frontline patrol officers, with whom many are the priority three case. So basically the people we've got on the street also help planning enforcement. The workings of the team is currently the topic of scrutiny and this indeed, and it has been scheduled for an internal audit review and we look forward to the findings of both for any further opportunities to improve. And I was about to say that in addition to this, as part of the cabinet's ongoing review of portfolios, I can confirm that this part of my portfolio will be moving to councillor Narendra Baines, the deputy leader, and this for future will be part of her portfolio.
Thank you councillor Satchwell. councillor Bowman? Has anybody any questions? councillor Hughes?
Thank you madam mayor. I actually have two questions if I may. The first question, and I'm very grateful for councillor Bowman to include in her report an update on the glass bring sites across the borough, which I think is very positive, particularly in terms of increased capacity at some locations in order to address the demand for those sites. Could you give any indication of when these new facilities will be rolled out across the borough?
Thank you councillor Hughes. In response to that question which you raised the other evening actually, I'd like to say that I could give you a definite date, but at this moment in time, we are still finalising the sites where the new containers will be. What we're trying to do is to maintain a skip, a container in every ward if possible or on the boundary of two wards and we're also looking for some new sites where there hasn't been a glass container collection point, such as in Bondfields for example. We are really keen to put, find a new site for a skip for glass. I hope that answers your question. In other words, as soon as we can, hopefully this side of Christmas, I'll be able to give a final date for when this is going to be happening, but I can't as yet because we are still working on it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. One more question.
Thank you very much madam mayor. I'm very pleased to see in both your report and that of councillor Robinson's reference to playparks and the proactive response moving forward. My only concern is that we have two portfolio holders mentioning playparks in their reports to council. Can I be reassured that there is a concerted coherent approach being adopted so that everybody understands what's happening and it's consistent across the borough? Thank you.
Oh yes councillor Hughes, we have a very consistent approach now. Thank you very much. It's taken a little bit of organising, but we're there now and councillor Robinson and I are very joined up in our approach and I think our teams are as well. Regular monthly meetings are now taking place and I'm feeling very positive about the way forward, but thank you for asking that question.
councillor Weeks?
Thank you madam mayor. I've got a question for councillor Satchwell. You jumped her to go over to councillor, pardon?
She is, that was, she is coming, no, she is coming later. She is almost at the bottom.
Our best will not go more than, next time we need to raise ourselves.
She will be coming on again, so don't worry. I assume there's nobody else for councillor Bowman? Thank you councillor Bowman. Do any members have any questions for councillor Pike? No? Sure? Okay, thank you. Do any members have any questions for councillor Robinson? councillor Krelin?
Just a point of explanation, sorry, page thirty eight on your report, one oh six spending. Can we have clarification? It says Barncroft Infant School. Barncroft Infant School doesn't exist. I presume this is a slip of the pen because it's an air primary and that money, has it in fact been held over from way ago when it was an infant school? Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you for those questions councillor Krelin. The report, the application for that was in twenty fourteen and on the application it said Barncroft Infants and they are unable to change that. So that, it's not a type of area, it's because it goes back for so far. Your second question was about the funds, the sum of fourteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen pounds seventeen pence. I didn't quite know where the seventeen pence came, but I'm sure it's important. That was for off site affordable housing and it was a contribution, so it's like an S one oh six and it has now been used and put into the pot for Brent House. So the pot's been building and that's what's funded, you know, the refurbishment of Brent House. Is that okay? Yes?
councillor Weeks?
Thank you madam mayor. I've got four questions if I may for councillor Robinson. It's all about homelessness. In your report, of the hundred and forty three households in temporary accommodation, how many were families? Do you want me to read all the questions or you answer them one by one? Okay. How far away is the temporary accommodation from Haven't Borough? Are plans any nearer to getting temporary accommodation within the borough? And will Brent House be used to temporarily accommodate families facing homelessness when it reopens in the spring of twenty twenty two? Thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions councillor Weeks. Of the hundred and forty three households in temporary accommodation, seventy five are families, fifty eight are singles and ten are couples. And you asked the question about how far away the temporary accommodation is from the borough. The government have a very, you know, stringent sort of, you know, sort of view on homelessness about suitability as much as anything else. So just so that you're clear, we are using Bogner, Gosport, Portsmouth and Beraton, but we are also using SLAOW, which is for ex offenders and we are also using London and that is for domestic abuse cases. So there are times when we have to look at suitable accommodation. Yeah, are we nearer to getting all of the temporary accommodation within the borough? No, I'm afraid we're not, but we continue to use the bed and breakfast as they're able to take the referrals from us and they do offer support and that is crucial, is that the support is there for these families or couples or singles. And Brent House, yes, it will be used for families when it opens in the spring of twenty twenty two.
Has anybody else any questions for councillor Robinson? No, thank you councillor Robinson. Do any members have any questions left for councillor Satchwell? councillor Weeks?
As you spoke about planning enforcement, my question's about planning enforcement. What and how are we dealing with the backlog of enforcement cases, especially with the rate of new cases coming in? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weeks. So I won't go over the points I made before about the way that cases are prioritised. What we need to do is we need to look at, not a single point in time data, we need to look over time what the trends are looking like. Are we getting, are our cases staying open longer and all this kind of stuff? So as part of the handover that I make when we meet to councillor Baines, I will ensure that we get detailed reporting of what's happening across the different priority levels. And also, we today had a very insightful meeting with the insights team and so I would be hopeful that they will be able to offer us a greater visibility in the future. I'm also particularly keen that because this is a subject of scrutiny, I think it's a really good opportunity to get an independent review of how the service is performing. So in short, I'll make sure that you can get some detailed information about the numbers because I think that matters as well because, so that we know are they going up, are they going down in each area and also what the plan is to effectively reduce any problem that's identified, but I'll work with councillor Baines to hand that over.
Thank you councillor Satchwell. Anybody else? Sorry. councillor Stone?
Thank you madam mayor. It's not so much a question, it's just I will be leading the task and finish panel. So if anybody has any comments or questions, please let me know and I can sort of get that, get the ball rolling on that.
Thank you. councillor Wilson?
Thank you madam mayor. In your report, you mention the appeal against the refusal of permission for development at Lower Road, which was later granted following the inspectors.
So there are times when we have to look at suitable accommodation. Yeah, are we nearer to getting all of the temporary accommodation within the borough? No, I'm afraid we're not. But we continue to use the bed and breakfast as they're able to take the referrals from us and they do offer support. And that is crucial, is that the support is there for these families or couples or singles. And Brent House, yes, it will be used for families when it opens in the spring of 2022.
Has anybody else? Any questions for councillor Robinson? No? Thank you, councillor Robinson. Do any members have any questions left for councillor Satchwell? Councillor Weeks.
As you spoke about planning enforcement, my question's about planning enforcement. What and how are we dealing with the backlog of enforcement cases, especially with the rate of new cases coming in? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Weeks. So I won't go over the points I made before about the way that cases are prioritised. What we need to do is we need to look at, not single point in time data, we need to look over time what the trends are looking like. Are we getting our cases staying open longer and all this kind of stuff? So as part of the handover that I make when we meet with councillor Baines, I will ensure that we get detailed reporting of what's happening across the different priority levels. And also, we today had a very insightful meeting with the Insights team. And so I would be hopeful that they will be able to offer us a greater visibility in the future. I'm also particularly keen that, because this is a subject of scrutiny, I think it's a really good opportunity to get an independent review of how the service is performing. So in short, I'll make sure that you can get some detailed information about the numbers because I think that matters as well, so that we know are they going up or are they going down in each area? And also what the plan is to effectively reduce any problem that's identified. But I'll work with councillor Baines to hand that over.
Thank you, councillor Satchwell. Anybody else? Sorry. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, madam mayor. It's not so much a question, it's just I will be leading the task and finish panel. So if anybody has any comments or questions, please let me know. And I can sort of get the ball rolling on that.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, madam mayor. In your report, you mention the appeal against the refusal of permission for development at Lower Road, which was later granted following the inspectors... Sorry, a public inquiry and the inspector's decision. Given that this was quite a controversial planning application and the decision was somewhat controversial when it was before the committee, I wondered whether there was any financial penalty as a result of the appeal being allowed.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. I think I actually was chair of planning committee on both occasions that it came forward. I believe there was no... I don't believe there were any costs allocated, but I'm looking at Simon, who might be able to confirm. But I'm pretty sure there weren't, but I will confirm in writing following this. But thank you.
You're absolutely right, councillor. There was no award of costs made against the council.
Anybody else for councillor Satchwell before we move on? Yes, yes. Councillor Patrick.
Thank you, madam mayor. I would like to ask councillor Robinson while I have the opportunity. I am very concerned about the standard of housing that is given to people who are evicted from their homes or who are homeless for some other reason. I have a family at the moment. They are a family of six who were evicted from their privately rented house in my ward. And they were housed five times in a week. The youngest members of the family were a five-week-old baby and a 22-month-old baby, plus two boys of school age. The mother clearly in very severe distress. They were sent out to a bed and breakfast in Titchfield. And the standard of accommodation there was so dire. The landlord was called in to actually mend the beds when they broke. And on examination, they were actually held together by pieces of wood. This family had no cooking arrangements within the establishment. And every day, they had to drive their two boys into school in Crookhorn. So I am very concerned that there are places like this that are being used by families who are already mentally and physically stressed. So can we perhaps look at some of the accommodation standards that this council is sending people to? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patrick.
Can I respond to that, please, madam mayor?
Yes, of course you can.
Yeah. I would just like to say to you, thank you very much, councillor Patrick, for bringing my attention to this. I'd like to say to you, as I'd like to say to anybody, you know, if you come up against things like, please come and speak to me, you know, as soon as you find out, and then I will make the inquiries and we can then resolve any issues that are... I would like to speak to you about this in more detail. And then I can report back to you and then any other members that may want me to report back to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Lastly, but not leastly, councillor Thane Smith. Does anybody have any questions, please? No? Thank you. Thank you, members. Are the leaders and cabinet leads' reports noted? Do any members have any questions for committee chairman? No? We now move on to item 10, Questions Understanding Order 27.4.1. And we have received no questions under the provisions of this standing order. Item 11 is Urgent Questions, Understanding Order 27.4.2. We have received no urgent questions under the provision of this standing order. Item 12 is Notices of Motion. And we have received one motion to cancel for consideration at tonight's meeting, which has been circulated with the agenda and proposed by councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor Francis. Can I remind members that speeches may take no longer than five minutes and members may only speak on one motion or amendment unless excising a right of reply? Raising a point of order or giving a personal explanation. The seconder to a motion or amendment may reserve their right to speak later in the debate if they wish. Councillor Rennie, would you like to introduce your motion?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. As we all know, it's five years just over since the murder of Joe Cox in 2016 during the Brexit referendum. And I don't think any of us would be thinking, would be seeing and hearing the same news five years later of another one of our elected politicians being tragically murdered while in the line of their duty. It's another sad death and another tragic reminder of the sad lament that some people go to commit horrible crimes upon our elected politicians. But we are all in this room, elected public servants. We all do work in our community. We all represent the communities we serve. And I think in my mind, an attack on any one of our fellow elected members, an attack on every single one of us. And we all need to feel like we are safe and around the work. We all have to feel like we can go about doing what we do in a way that we're not going to be harassed by the public. We're not going to be feeling in danger from the public. Which is why I want to make sure we bring a motion forward that stresses to central government that politicians at all levels should be remembered when they consider safety proposals that are brought forward. And I want us to give them power, me to write to the leaders of all elected parties to remind them of that matter. I hope that you can support me in this motion. And I also hope that you support me in this council mourning the loss of Sir David Amis MP, who was tragically murdered while performing his constituency duties on the 15th of October 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Francis, do you wish to speak in support of the motion?
Madam mayor. I'm happy to second this motion and have the approval of my fellow members of the opposition. The leader of the council has expressed very clearly our sorrow at the loss of Sir David Amis. And our belief in the power of democratic politics to make positive changes to people's lives. Condolences should be sent to the Speaker of the House of Commons. It is to be hoped that measures to protect MPs and councillors will not result in restrictions in communication between elected representatives and their communities. This would be a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Do any members wish to debate this matter? Councillor Rennie, do you...
Oh, sorry, councillor Keith.
Sorry.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm going to stand for this because I think it's really important. I can support the motion, but I do think there's a word missing. Because it says in the third line, leaders of all political parties in Westminster to support measures. There's a word missing there, whether it's additional measures, current measures, support measures. And also I'd like to draw your attention, of course, to Deputy PC Keith Palmer. He was guardian of Westminster estate, doing his business, supporting democracy. And he was killed by a terrorist who was shot at the scene. So this is far greater than just the elected representatives of our society. It's democracy itself. And I would urge all of us to be brave. Do not cower to any of these people. People may ring you up, they may knock on your door. Do not cower to them. Because if they do, or we do, they win. And that's not allowed. So I'm happy to support the motion. I do think there's a word missing. But it's far greater than just elected representatives in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor Branson.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just to remind all councillors that we all have our addresses on the website. And we have the right to withdraw them. I think many politicians don't have their addresses anymore. And just in case anybody does feel that they are at risk and they can have their address via the Plaza. So just to sort of make that point. Because I think, you know, some people might feel that it's at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Branson. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, madam mayor. Going back a few years ago, I was involved with setting up a lone working policy. I've not seen or heard about that policy since that day. Is that something we ought to maybe readdress, relook at? Should every councillor have a copy of that policy? Because there are strict guidelines of how to go about your business if you need to go into community settings and also into people's homes.
Thank you. Councillor...
Councillor, sorry, can I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you, madam man. Thank you, councillor Howard, for making that point. One of the items that I have asked for within my portfolio, I do head health and safety. And it's something to be looked at again and addressed, including... So we need to strike a balance, as councillor Hughes alluded to, and councillor Francis as well. And the balance needs to be that we need to continue engaging with our communities and continue our right to free speech, et cetera, et cetera, and represent our communities. But we also have a duty to ensure that we're all kept safe. So adequate risk assessments that don't curtail, don't restrict us in any way. But I promise that I'll be looking into this and communicating and consulting with each and every one of you. And if you have any issues, including things like your addresses that you don't want put on public websites or any other means that actually where you feel under threat in any way, we'll take that seriously and take that on board going forward. And that includes actually, I've discussed along with the leader and the chief exec, entry into this building, particularly the public side of this building. And assurances that the chief exec is going to take forward to make sure that we all feel safe.
Thank you, councillor Baines. Has anybody else? Councillor Wilson.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I mean, I'm happy to support this. And I think, given what happened to Sir David, it made me think about some of the communications that I receive from people. Because I think many of us receive personal attacks on our integrity, things to do with your family. And whilst we all accept the sort of rough and tumble of arguing and debating, it's sometimes unpleasant when other members of your family see things, which, you know, especially children, et cetera. So I would like to think that if we and other councils send similar messages, it may, if it gains publicity, help to make people reflect on the sort of communications that they send to their elected politicians at whatever level. And I think to a degree, we all become a little anesthetised to the nature of them until something really drastic happens.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Anybody else? Councillor Weeks, sorry. Councillor, sorry, your mic has gone off.
We had a very good email from Daniel Tuohy about safety after this gentleman was murdered. And the information that he gave in that email was phenomenal for looking after our safety. So I think perhaps we should all go back to our emails and have a look at what he actually said to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Patel.
Thank you, madam chief. Just a comment on the security aspect. Should we make it default not to have addresses on our website of councillors?
Daniel Tuohy, sorry, Mr Tuohy.
Have you responded to the officer?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. And thank you for the comments about the email which I've circulated to all members at the time. I'm happy to recirculate that email if that's useful for members because I understand you'll all have lots of emails coming into your entrée. And perhaps if I refresh that for you, it may be useful tomorrow. In relation to the question of the publishing of addresses for members, it is a legislative requirement at the moment that the starting point is that members as elected representatives do have their addresses published on our site. However, the legislation also provides for a mechanism whereby, should the scenario arise where you feel that certain events are transpiring, either with a known individual or an unknown individual, whereby you feel that your personal safety is at risk, then you may inform me and then I will engage with you to understand the situation. And then we may remove your or redact your address from our website. So please do keep that in mind should you find yourself in circumstances such as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Tuohy. Anybody else? Councillor Rennie, do you wish to reply to this debate?
Only to say thank you for all your comments and particularly to reflect on what councillor Hughes said. Because I could not agree more that we shouldn't be cowered by any actions of any individual who wishes to undermine our democracy. And as for PC Keith Palmer, I was actually in Westminster in the House of Commons on the day that he was murdered. And I still remember absolutely vividly that day. And I could not feel more grateful for what he did in protecting everybody in that building, including myself, on the day he was murdered. And I still feel a high emotion about that, you know, all these years on. So, you know, I totally agree, we will not be cowered. And this motion is not designed to show that we aren't going to be cowered. And I think by underlying our support for our democracy, I think we actually go and actually put it back at these people and say that we will not be stopped from what we're doing as locally elected politicians and representing our communities.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. The motion stands, proposed and seconded. Are all of those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you, members. The motion is carried. Members, the last item on this evening's agenda is acceptance of minutes. Please can I have a proposer to accept the minutes listed within the agenda? Seconder?
Sorry, madam mayor, can you confirm the proposer for me, please?
Councillor Keith.
Thank you.
And the seconder is councillor Branson. Thank you. Do any members wish to debate this matter? Members, are the minutes accepted? Lastly, please be aware that I am holding a mayor's coffee morning on Friday, the 10th of December at 7am in this very room. Sorry, 10am. It's been a long day. You'll be on your own. 10 o'clock in the morning, not 7 o'clock. I'm really sorry. And I would be really grateful if as many of you as possible would be able to attend. Obviously, it's to support the RNLI as well. So thank you for that. Finally, this concludes this meeting at the council. I'd like to thank you all for your attendance and therefore close the meeting at 6:17. Thank you and good night.